We've declared road order.
Well, this is a workshop, so we don't need to do that.
I take it back. If not, road order.
So, this evening, we wanted to get in front of you. First of all, we said a couple things. So, number one, Mr. Berry is on his way to Maiden High School. So, as you may or may not know, Maiden is in the Western Finals of volleyball championship. His daughters play. So, he, I don't know why he chose them over us, but that's where he is. Secondly, Cameron McCarr is behind you. He is our new budget analyst that we're very excited to have him on board. Cameron was a former town manager at Rutherford Park and Spindale. Or, just Spindale, excuse me. Spindale, and then formerly, he was with...
Town of Silver.
Town of Silver for a couple of years. So, we're happy to have him here. We have kick-started the budget process, so this workshop actually serves a couple of purposes. One, I want to show the interaction between our bond projects and the 40 acres. I've got a slide to discuss that. Also, kind of as a precursor to our next year's budget cycle, and talk about the current year, because a couple of these projects may even happen this fiscal year. I want you to be aware of those. So, that's kind of the agenda for the next 45 minutes to an hour. So, these projects above, on the screen here, are really somewhat unique, and they're not operational, but they're projects that you all should know about, or if not, we're going to speak to in a little detail. So, let me just go through those then, one by one. So, you're aware of the Lackey Project. We've been told, through an MOU as well that you signed, we're expecting them to go make five to seven million dollars for a memorial of Guyana Park. They plan to construct a lake house, performance dock, X theater, conservatory, canopy walk, gardens, and an overflow parking lot. The design of this project is underway by TSWW. Our cost, at this point, is estimated at $750,000. And that will include the main driveway, or a portion thereof, the main parking lot, restrooms, canoe kayak launch, boat dock, and fishing pier, where we decide those will be relocated. One unknown that I just wanted to mention, the operation and maintenance costs, certainly we don't have the O and N plan done. We've asked for that. So, over the coming months, that will be developed, and we'll determine what our ongoing maintenance and operation commitment will be. So, that's project one. Project two, if you heard about last month, is our Quanis Park splash pad. The city will own and maintain that as an addition to our park operations. We have authorized, or you have authorized, the splash pad management team to bring a design and finalize the features, based on your comments at the meeting, whether that's 10, 15, 20 features, big water bucket, et cetera, as we went through, as Mac went through that presentation at your council meeting last month. We want it to have a wow fuck factor, and to be a regional draw to visitors coming to Hickory. Estimated project cost of $250,000 to $350,000, depending on the design, number of features, size of the splash pad. As you know, the Quanis Club's are planning to raise at least $100,000 towards the project. So, our share coming off that number then would be in that $150,000 to $250,000 range.
We've only got $99,999 to raise. My grandson gave me a dollar.
You got a dollar. Fantastic. Was that the first dollar? That was the first dollar, right?
Okay.
In jail's the Quanis Park. Okay.
So, are we talking, is everything we're talking fiscal year 16?
No, sir. Some of this may even be at the current...
You missed that at the beginning, okay.
It just, timing may may occur still this fiscal year, and there were no fiscal years. This one's kind of been hidden for a while. I just wanted to remind you about this one. This is the North Carolina Data Campus Project, or the old MJP, we used to call it at the county, multi-jurisdictional park partnership in Conover there to attract, right behind Tri-City Baptist, Baltimore, to attract data campus to the area. We jointly received a $2.6 million loan from the NC Department of Commerce. It's a 55-inch site development, with a water sewer, electrical, stormwater, streets, and sidewalk. The county has the largest share, 57 percent, Hickory with the second largest, 19 percent. And you see the other three partners in the project. The partners share in additional property tax revenues, based on investment. So, whatever our 19 percent commitment is, if we land a $100 million company, it generates a million dollars in revenue, we get 19 percent of that million dollars in revenue, each year, annually. That's our share of the park. Current year payment, I guess the last two years, if you remember, that was a seven-year loan. The first two years are interest only. The next five years, which this does start next fiscal year, will be, next year's payment's $104,806. We're currently paying $9880, so we've got $94,926 increase for next year, and for the subsequent four years as well, until that loan is paid off. So, that will be an increase to next year's budget. A portion of this, we are, obviously, water and sewer is involved, so we will plan to pay for the water and sewer portion of that project, of our share, at least, with water and sewer revenues. So, that will help mitigate the general funds commitment to that project. Sandy Ridge Road, roundabouts. We have received acknowledgement of a CMAC, or congestion mitigation air quality grant, about $3.7 million for next fiscal year. This was originally designed to add lanes at both intersections. And I've got a map. I'll show you where these are, so we can look at that. When we first determined how much right-of-way and utility relocation costs were, the roundabout option was decided to be a better option. So, there's two roundabouts, actually on 29th, I mean, on 16th and 29th, and Sandy Ridge Road in 29th.
21st.
I'm sorry, 21st, yes. And I'll show you a map in just a second. Total project cost of $4.6 million. Our 20 percent share of this project is a little over $924,000. If I can grab this. Get this. Just show you visually. So, here's 29th and 16th. There's the State of Voice Credit Union Building right here. So, this is traveling north on 29th towards probably 127th. Chuck is in the audience if you have any specific questions, but obviously, a roundabout in this particular area here. And if we pan... Here, also at this intersection. There's a church right here. I guess there's two churches here.
Two office deans.
I don't think it's Saint Stephen's.
It's an independent device church.
Do you know where Rat there is too? So, Chuck, what's the distance between those two? Do you happen to know?
It's about a half mile. It's not really far.
Yeah, half a mile.
And the goal is, is for Sandy Ridge Road to stay two lanes in that area.
Right. So, help me understand, you know, aside from, I guess, are they signalized roundabouts?
No.
Okay. So, how is a roundabout less expensive for right-of-way and utility relocation than adding lanes?
Well, if you're, if you're going to signalized intersections, you actually got the four lane, that's, that piece of Sandy Ridge Road, right here.
Right.
By the time you do that, and get the additional easements for the power line relocation, you get pretty wide from a, from a acquisition standpoint. Also, the other component, those intersections becoming larger, going to mass cars, and a lot of cost associated with that. And so, you actually end up with less right-of-way needing to be acquired. And the intersections actually get bigger, because you're adding lanes, if you will. So, the, so the roundabout footprinting is big as you really think it is. Now, the 1 of 21st Avenue is a single-lane roundabout, the lower side of the page, and the 1 of 29th Avenue, about low speed, is a two-lane roundabout.
And that's going to, I mean, transportation engineers say that's going to function okay unsignalized?
Yes. And again, we, we actually sent, we sent that...
But I'm talking about, I'm talking about traffic volumes coming up 29th head north. And you know how they stack?
And, and in this case, again, the whole, the whole idea of a roundabout is you're, you're filling all of those gaps versus somebody just sitting in the...
It's our mode of republic getting accustomed to this.
Correct, which has improved quite a bit. And again, we, we actually sent this through Raleigh Congestion Management, DOT, to actually double-check the numbers if you will.
Oh, they did.
Their recommendation is, following up on your answer, the 29th Avenue initially will work as a single lane, but the recommendation is, for some future growth, is, is a dual lane. So, we went, we changed it from a single lane to a dual-lane roundabout. So, 21st is a single lane, 29th is a dual lane.
How much is that estimated cost of these right-of-way?
There's, there's probably, again, without knowing exact numbers off the top of my head, but it, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of probably 15 to 20 percent of it, just right-of-way. Again, the other, the other component that relates to this is, when utility, overhead utilities are relocated, if you will, we have to provide that new easement for them, at our expense, if you will, not at their expense. And that's, that's happening due to some changes in Raleigh a couple of years ago. So, instead of sort of telling Duke, they're on their own, for example, to, to deal with the relocation, even if we paid for the, for the pole work, we still, we also have to get into the, to the easement, which essentially is 15-foot either side of the new line. So, part of that's going to be in right-of-way, the other half gets towards the houses, if you will.
How, how much difference would it make to bury those lands in there?
Much more expensive. And in reality, you're talking with Duke, that service, that type of service, they would not put underground anyway.
Okay. About this project, next fiscal year. Quanis Mill Park. City initiated that master plan, at least 79 acres for a future park in 2008. Couple of meetings were held in '08 and '09. The property includes many natural features, with the Volant Creek waterfall, wide variety of vegetation, wildlife, and ecological habitat. Amenities currently proposed are picnic-ing, walking bike trails, play areas, disc golf, environmental education, and exercise stations. The project in 2009, total project was estimated at $2.9 million. Phase one, which is access from Quanis Mill Road, not from the Old Mill Landing side, was estimated at $1.3 million. As you know, we received a $900,000 donation from Outward Bound. So, if we were to fund phase one, our share would be $100,000. Those are, those are $2009, so we'd have to give revised cost estimates. That's what our share would be at $2009.
Outward Bound, have some kind of a special deal to use that, or just...
Right now, that money is in fund balance. We have it. So, it's sitting there waiting to be used for Quanis Mill Park.
I mean, since they've made the donation, I'm sure they might want to use that for some of their training or classes.
There's no restrictions on that at all, which is pretty clear. It's our, it's our money. And what we did do with that 10 acres, the designer is going back, and that was originally planned to be commercial properties, to sell those properties. Council decided that we didn't want to keep that, so now, the designer is reviewing or revising the master plan to incorporate those 10 acres into park amenities. So, that is in the process of being sent to staff and Parks and Recreation Commission to weigh in on that additional 10 acres. So, there's Quanis Mill Park. City Park, back in April, City Council approved a 10-year priority use agreement, where the Grand River Tennis Association would contribute $125,000 towards a new picnic shelter, restroom, meeting room facility, addition of 250 linear feet of paved access road, and 1,440 linear feet of eight-foot wide paved walkway. We also are planning to expand parking in this park from 20 spaces to 90 spaces, which will also help us with Lackey Project. This, this will include curb and gutter, area lighting, removal of the existing picnic shelter restroom facility. And as we've discussed, I guess in your meetings with the Riverwalk and Lackey Project, additional parking will likely be needed in light of that Lackey Project expansion. I guess, the lake house went from seating 350 people to 500 to 750, now we're up close to 1,000 people. So, that triggers additional parking requirements, as planning has pointed out. So, we have to use City Park, JC Park, and then whatever parking spaces we have at, just below the Lackey Project. So, we're working on making sure we have the parking spaces in light of their occupancy in the lake house.
What are the Lackey's invasion happening there, that, that scene and so forth, performances?
Well, we don't know all the details. That's certainly going to be part of it. Their conservancy would determine, you know, what events they're going to host, or, or way too early in that process, you know, I guess you have to appoint members for that conservancy board. So, those are certain, certainly questions we'll need to ask them, you know, once we get to the finalizing this agreement. So, the estimated cost of this particular project at City Park is $574,000. If you take out the 125 by GHTA, the balance of $449,000 will be funded by the city. And this is one of those that could happen in the current fiscal year, right, Mac? As Brad was asking.
Do we know how much money the, the suggestions raised to date?
Do you know how much money has been raised to date by GHTA?
I do not. I know they had, when we were doing this, they had, probably, they were, they were prepared to contribute the balance of that. I've heard anywhere from $75,000 to $90,000, they have already, but they've started discussions on their fundraising.
Well, we'll ask. Why don't we, you might ask them, how we get a status update, we'll put that in NC, then maybe next Friday, perhaps, if you get an answer about that. Okay, the next project, streetscapes related to our bond project. We're in need of a zoning overlay consultant. The goal is to strengthen site design standards for private development in areas where streetscape improvements are planned, related to bonds. The overlay creates a more uniform appearance in private development, regardless of underlying zoning requirements. Coordination on lighting, landscaping, improved signage design, replacement, and more efficient ingress egress with new medians installed in those streetscapes. Staff is developing RFQ to hire, or planning a design firm to develop new regulations for key areas of the, of the city of Hickory. And we're estimating this consultant to cost about $150,000. Questions? Andrew, you want to add?
Well, just that, this one, although it hasn't been talked about as much with, with City Council, it's come up quite frequently with the bond commission. They just want to make sure that if we're going to invest, say, for instance, LR Boulevard, we're going to invest in LR Boulevard and streetscapes, is our, is our zoning and the site planning rules that dictate how that development is occurring? Is it as strong as it could be, and where can it be strengthened? And then usually, overlay districts create another layer of standards that, then say, if you're in this area and the city's making an investment, these are the extra rules that you'll follow for, for strong development right along those roadways. So, it's just something that we're, we're looking at, and we're just anticipating to need to do that in various areas, Springs Road, Highway 127, potentially Old Lenore Road, making sure that the zoning rules are, are strong enough. So, we, we could take a stab at it, but we really feel like it's a consultant could bring a lot to the table to help us with getting that right.
And our last project on the list is a wayfinding program to tie into our gateways and that discussion of the end of bonds. We've talked about 100 new signs of varying sizes with similar design, install citywide direct-to-direct travelers into Hickory from surrounding highways, and guide them to multiple public destinations. Original program was developed in 2008, though the Great Recession prevented implementation at that time. With gateway signage now part of the bond program, we have five gateways that will be developed at key entry points into Hickory. Gateways are usually eye-catching, welcome signage, with landscaping into a public art design to encourage motorists to recognize when they have arrived, and to entice others to shop, and shop, so. Shop and shop. We wanted to accentuate shop. Sales tax, sales tax, we need the sales tax line. We're putting an estimate of $800,000 on that?
Yes.
Again, this is related to gateways, and if we've got five major gateways, this is, in essence, 100 smaller gateways throughout the city.
So, we have that project that's been fully developed. Fraser and Associates was who we worked with a number of years ago. We've, Chuck and I and Brian have gone through the plans and updated the signage to include some of the bond projects, CityWalk, RiverWalk, just making sure that everything is still the way it needs to be. And so, it really is to a point where if you're interested to work on it, then we could send it out for final approval through, in that Fraser and Associates engineering or architecture firm again, and then fabricate the signs and install them. That's the, that was the dollar amount, 800,000 back in, you know, 2011? Well, Fraser and Associates did. So, those numbers, I think, you know, were in the ballpark. I think we could certainly do it for a little less, but maybe not much less, because now we are, what, six years, five years further out. So, what do you think, Chuck?
I, I agree with everything you said, with probably one clarification. This one, their, their 800,000 at the time included some pretty major, uh, primary gateway signs that are sort of rolling into the bond program to some extent. So, I think if we go really to the, to the next level in the signage, that'll pull a little bit of money out of their estimate. That will go towards probably whatever increases in cost that's evolved since then. So, I'm not saying that 800,000 is wrong, but it's really sort of, this is more wayfinding than it is gateway, but it, but it relates to the gateway component in, in the bond program.
Well, I was going to ask, now, we've got $8,000 for signage. That is good business if you get it.
Well, some of those signs are fairly, that includes interstate signage, that includes, you know, some signs that are obviously much taller than, than pedestrian level, it's to be seen along the highways. That includes maybe some right-of-way acquisition fabrication. I think Chuck...
And installation.
Well, it's, it's, you know, higher-end pole structure aesthetics, it's, it's not a four-by-four post.
Lighting, is lighting included in that?
Yeah, they're not lit.
But you've seen them, Morganton has a full system of wayfinding. Newton has, if you're on Highway 16 going through Conover, you'll see the Newton signs. Conover probably has them too now. There are a number of cities that have got them.
Raleigh, Charlotte.
Raleigh, yeah.
Lot of them.
It's just the, you know, they'll have the logo, the directional, everything is directing you to a public destination, so whether that's Salt Block, or Crodade Stadium, or...
Downtown.
Downtown, City Hall, just depends on what, what angle you're coming from, but it's designed to help tourists get around.
And that was part of that process back then, is to identify those destination points, the targets, to lead, to lead the public to, if you will. Parking, downtown parking is sort of part of that component also.
No private directions, no private.
Maybe if they paid, I was watching, maybe we'd have some...
Are they aligned? Yeah, there are no private businesses, but, you know, we do direct to something like, for Highway 70, we call that regional shopping corridor, so just, you know, that kind of thing.
Bumont.
Bumont Shopping District, Old Lenore Road, or actually, Bumont Business District is what it'll say now, and then there's another one for Old Lenore Road Business District. There's, um, that's probably, those are the major ones related to shopping.
You know, like on the interstate highway, you see little signs, you know, all these red flags.
Right, that's the...
They pay something, you know.
And you got to be within plus proximity of the interstate for that to happen.
Right. Okay, so I don't know if each of you wrote down each of those numbers and see what our total dollars are. The mayor's jotted some things down, so I'm going to get you. How much is the bracket?
3.8 million.
Okay, you have. Do you have a question? I want to go to the answer before you pay for that, y'all. Exactly. Okay. So, these are all the projects we just went through up top.
I got 3.5. Where'd you get that?
Section 390.
3.7.
You get it done.
I rounded it up like...
3.8 is correct.
4.59, 4.49.
This is the best number in hand, and what we've got available to us. So, let me just go through this real quickly. So, again, the projects are on your left. The funding source is kind of in that second column. General fund, we've got a little bit of water and sewer money on the Sandy Ridge Road roundabout. What I've done here is, obviously, added the total project cost, 14.8 million dollars. We've got external contributions of about $11 million. You get Lackey, and you've got state grant, and we've got $900,000 in the bank from our Quanis Mill, from Outward Bound, et cetera, et cetera. $11 million in private slash state investment. So, our share is about 3.8 million dollars. So, we reported the audit at your last month's meeting as well, and if you'll recall, we were at 33 percent fund balance on June 30, 2015. With council's goal of 25 percent of our general fund expenditures, we've got almost $1.2 million above that 25 percent that we could spend for these projects. Still maintaining that 25 percent goal. In the current year budget, we've got $965,000 in winter capital reserve, that is unobligated, undesigned. We have, in prior years, designated funds for parking, district court, and fuel, and those three items in the total amounts, as of June 30. We've got, actually, we've got about $40,000 or more here in the current year, but as of June 30, 2015, those amounts are still in the bank, the fund balance. And then we had a miscellaneous capital reserve from last year as well that hasn't been spent. That, coupled with, we're able to spend the $90,000 on water and sewer needs for the NC data campus in Conover. The total funds we have is a little, almost $4 million rounding out, as Mr. Lael likes to do. So, if you've got 3.8 costs, we've got about $4 million in the bank to pay for that. Now, this is over and above whatever operating capital budgets that we will do, you know, separate apart from this, but these items were not on that radar on a normal budget. So, we plan to spend these dollars for those projects, unless you have a different direction we want to go in any of those big projects, between into this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
I have a question.
Yes.
Data campus. Now, the history there is, we agreed to do it, land sold to Apple. You were, you were with County, I'm sure, so you probably remember, land sold to Apple. There was a gain on the sale of the land, $2.95 million. Why are we, why are we having to pay $100,000? That gain was used to help pay for those improvements.
The agreement stipulated that those funds went back to the nonprofit, which is Scott Mall, or the EDC, what is that corporation, not corporation? They, they received the money for that.
Yeah, okay, so I pulled up an email that I, we can get into this later, but basically, he says, "All money will be either distributed through the MJP partners, or restricted the property development cost by the EDC." So, in other words, I don't think the EDC needs to be holding on to 2-point-whatever million dollars.
They're, they're our non-government arm, that they can secure options. They, the Park 764.
Right, 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 right.
So, the county's position... So the county's position, obviously I wasn't here at the city, but the county's position was we're using those funds as that real estate development arm to do that. Now with Hickory at 19%, certainly Hickory wants to make sure they have their fair share of this project. And I think we do with 764 because we're not allowing anyone else to be a part of that project. But yes, we need to keep an eye on that particular pot of money. Scott can give us a report on that and use that as seed money, either an option or buy land, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, we wouldn't want our 19% share of that fund to go to another jurisdiction for economic development.
Really, right. And then maybe we could even, some of, some of, some of it might be used to defray the cost of this, I don't know.
I think the problem with that is it's not only our shares, I mean, the county gets 57%. So then that money they have for seed money goes away.
Yeah, I'm saying that it's spending down to a million bucks and distributed throughout.
For the loans.
Really, you said, yeah, yeah, that reduces our loan payment.
We can certainly talk to the county about that, you know, obviously they're in the driver's seat of 57% of that, yeah.
600,000, how much is our share?
19%.
19% of 2.95 million?
About 600,000. Now ideally, we have someone on the hook. But, so we've got until now in July to obviously make that decision. Maybe we do it for one year, maybe you go ahead and pay down a portion of it, that's a sort of a conversation we can have. Other thoughts or questions?
Well, this year we added like 500,000 to that fund balance?
Yes, sir. So that's how we do part of this.
For next year, any thoughts on where we're likely to end up? I mean, we're only three months into the year, I know.
Well, property tax revenues, of course, in July, it's in September, you know, not a lot of people pay during those months, but we're up 35% compared to last year. Sales tax revenues are really doing well. So we've only got two months in the bank, there are 45 months in arrears before we hit a Raleigh. But that's 6 to 8% growth so far out of the gate, and we're expecting that to stay consistent through the rest of the year. So that's some, some good money. And as you know, the property tax has really hurt us the last number of years. As you saw in your manager's communication and made a comment on, which I appreciate. Certainly we've got some development going on, and we just need to keep that development up. So all of that certainly adds to our public tax tax, that property tax revenues will come in on.
Where do we stand on a designated designation in the future?
With, well, we asked the county for another lease, we planned a two or three. It's now a two-year lease with Toba County. Their Justice Center facility is supposed to be finished by, by next year. So I think the agreement we've worked out with the county is that they'll continue to lease that facility for district court for two years. And then at that point, we decide, you know, if they want to take all of court and have their courtrooms, then we'll have our building back.
So they're not going away before two years?
They need, correct, they need the court facility for at least two more years.
Because I've heard, I've heard they would pay to leave.
Well, that river's been going around, I can promise you, because I had something to do with that project, they don't have enough parking. They, I don't know if they're gonna have enough to open day one, in fact, they're already not letting another park in there. And you start adding that many corporates and that number of people, it's very, very, very difficult. When they opened the parking deck, it was full day one, because I stood out there and held a direct track, it was a mess.
So we're good there for at least two more years.
Two more years for that, yes, sir.
But this change is all right, because that, that will go away.
Yeah, yeah, and we don't have to spend, you know, that's just a designation. That's, that's money we've got for, you know, for that building or otherwise. Legally, we don't have to spend those funds on, on that particular building. It was just a lease we've got with Toba County.
We own that whole facility there, right?
District Court facility, yes.
And the parking, I mean, that's not a legal designation, but.
No.
There are certainly plenty of parking expenses up in those, those columns.
Yes, yes. I've got a final slide to talk a little bit about parking as well. So that, that would be our plan to target those dollars to help pay for those costs. Obviously, we've got estimates on some of those. And I failed to mention Kauanua Splash Pad, I put that in the middle, I told you on a previous slide, 150 to 250. I just put a number down at 200, I put it in the middle. If we do something smaller, it'd be 150, we could keep it at 200. So as we get a design from that Splash Pad management team, certainly some of the, that number and others may, may change somewhat.
Is Kauanua's planning to raise more than the 100 or just stop at 100?
I think we'll keep it, we'll take it.
I do, which I would. And add a bit and just have like a camp on.
Is there any priority for what we do first? I don't think there is a priority, Bruce, at least we have not determined. We were, we're certainly pleased that we've, we've got the funding mechanisms to pay for those. You know, I think as, as things start coming off the board, for example, you know, City Park Tennis Courts will probably be the first project on this list that will get done because that may happen in the spring. I think at that point, we start getting more estimates and then maybe we can prioritize, especially if one of these numbers significantly increases, we make one revisit.
I'm just looking at the money expended versus the total cost we're getting, I mean.
Right.
The money expended for the lackey, 750, it probably isn't 7 million. That's, that's pretty substantial. You know, Splash Pad, 200,000, we're only getting 300.
Oh, we're getting 100.
Okay. Clonger Mill, we're only having to pay 400, but yet, you know, we're, you know, we're 1.3.
Well, you mentioned Clonger Mill, there's nothing that says we can just spend the 900 we have. Now certainly that's not phase one, and we'd have to go back to the drawing board and obviously pull out some amenities. But we've got 900,000 in the bank earning interest.
Well, that's exciting, it's just seeing that this is sort of the start of what we talked about, the bond, having external contribution for, you know, what we want to do into bigger and better, and, and more of what we want.
Yes, we would have three times our investment, if I'm doing that right. Three times our investment of external contributions.
So on the capital reserve, typically our policy is 1.5% of revenue is designated for capital reserve, is that correct?
And that's what this one seems about.
I mean, we, that's for operational and non-recurring type stuff. I mean, we wouldn't spend our entire capital reserve on a budget year on these projects, would we? I'm trying to understand, is this, is this capital reserve fund balance, it's over and above the 1.5% that we normally budget, that's, that's accumulated?
Uh, let's see if I can answer your question.
Interesting question, yeah.
Well, yes and no. So we have spent down that capital reserve in the current year budget. A couple of projects come to mind, the whole water and sewer downtown, Trade Alley, that was 3 million dollars of that. That was part of that capital reserve.
Generator.
Generator, yeah, there, the water plant, water treatment plant. So that number's come down. What we have done is this 965 goes into capital reserve, not funding a specific project every year.
Right.
That's the number that's in the current year budget. Next year's budget would have another 965, 970, and next year's budget, unobligated, that's not part of these numbers. That's this year, next year's budget would have another 965 or 970 in the budget. For capital, to help replenish that.
So I'm asking then, I guess, more of a policy question, is it, would it, is it proper that we take a whole year's worth of capital reserve and spend it on new projects?
I see your point. In this year, under this proposal, we would be taking this year's money, that would typically be spent for future.
For generators, for repairing sewer lines that were, for that storm drain that we're having to pay out of fund balance.
Correct.
And this meeting in office.
In this scenario, that would be spending the money that certainly went to capital reserve currently.
And the reason I bring it, it'd be a shift from the way I think we have done, at least in my experience on council, the way we've done it in the past.
We'd be running counter fair.
Absolutely, we're just spending everything down, which is why.
Well, there's no, there's no question, this is, this is a big investment. But we won't have as many covey hogs of money to have.
That's a good way to put it, Larry. In capital reserve, I'm just looking, so we've got small amount of rideaway funds still left there. The bulk of that capital reserve is water and sewer and for our water plant. The bulk of which, of course, we can't, we're not spending, that's designated for water and sewer. So this miscellaneous capital reserve is the non-water and sewer. So in essence, your capital reserve would be depleted, with the exception of water and sewer and for the water plant, by doing this, until the following year, which would be built back up with the 965 again. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because each of these are part of our capital reserve in this designation, parking, district court, fuel.
Is there a schedule on when we're to lose current debts? I'm hearing for, I don't know how long the, the city will be debt-free in so many years after you were at now. Is there a schedule on?
2017.
It's in the debt schedule, it's the next two years.
Does that impact?
No.
Well, no, I'm not talking about bonds.
Our existing debts?
Yes.
Well, there's various forms of that, obviously you've got the data camps, which is a portion of that debt that's gonna be on there for another five years.
I'm just talking about the ones that are rolling off, I guess, or the ones that were.
Saying, some of them roll off every, every year, that does not factor in here.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, that's gonna have something to do, it will things in the, in the long run. Is there a way to project or look at that, or have a, that we can have a schedule of what those things would be and what the ramifications of those would be?
I did bring my capital, but I can certainly.
Yeah, I'm not talking tonight, I'm just, you know, that would be interesting to look at and see what debts we're willing to be able to pay off in, in what period of time.
Sure.
Because that'll end up being in our advantage.
But plus that 965 this fiscal year, we're 133, we're not gonna spend all that by the end of this.
Well, we have a plan, so we accept for these particular projects to have.
So with regards to, and I don't wanna mix apples and oranges, but because we're talking about capital projects and then you talk about more operational, functional, like items, you know, police, fire, all those types of things. I mean, if department heads, have you, has this gone over to department head? Are there gonna be any pressures in fiscal year 16 with regards to personnel, benefit packages? Yeah, yeah, health insurance is really what I'm saying, yeah. You know, those, those types of things that, that we can see looming on the horizon, yeah. And if I recall, 2016 is when we don't get any privilege license revenue.
That's correct, but we raised the tax rate to accommodate that.
We didn't raise it off, yeah, we raised the tax rate.
To account for that 1 billion dollar loss.
Yeah.
So we replace that revenue source. And the potential revenue loss from tax revaluation, we also accounted for that with the tax rate in drop. That was the 6.65% taxing.
Right.
We've got that revenue covered.
Right.
Answer your questions, yes.
Okay, so the first question, yeah, first question.
Yes, you'll be elaborating.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we just started meeting, so we've met with, obviously, two admin departments, so finance and human resources. Last week we met with the fire department, and today, in fact, we met with the police department, so two of our larger departments. Yes, there are capital needs. Fire is probably gonna need another fire truck, in light of the fact that it takes 12 months to build. Police has got some, well, various computer equipment, in-car cameras, tasers, you know, their normal. We think we can handle all that in operation, just from what I've seen to date. Granted, we'll be with Chuck's group next week, so it sounds like that's a, a direction to kind of limit our asks, Chuck, right?
That's not what I heard.
I don't like to bring.
I don't like.
I heard we gotta get the jobs better.
Arm its trucks.
So speaking of fire truck, my plan is, I don't mind sharing with you, is to probably finance that next fire truck. To spread that payment out, which is a huge payment, whether it's 600,000 for an engine truck or a million and one for a ladder truck, that's just too much to get. So my plan is to kind of spread those costs out, especially in the industry environment we're in, have more of a steady payment so that our budget doesn't have these peaks and valleys. One thing on the horizon, the only concern I have from police is the year after next, they've got a half million dollar radio system that they've got to replace, that's two years after. I don't have that solved yet, I just heard about it today.
That debt we're gonna lose. That debt we're gonna lose, we'll pick it back up.
There you go. Hang this, solve that problem.
What about the city's biggest expense, which courses is, is the personnel? Any pressures there?
So that personnel, certainly we would like to, we've gotta get through all the departmental budget requests. We'd certainly like to get pay raises again, we've been able to do that now the last couple of years. So that's certainly on my to-do list. Health insurance, we are, to use a bad term, we are bleeding, health insurance, the costs are rising to the roof. So that needs to be addressed as well. So yeah, there will be financial pressures, pressures there.
Right. New positions, that kind of stuff also is.
We have not seen a significant, well, to date, I haven't seen any new position requests in the fourth quarter.
Okay, okay.
So, so, yeah, we're accounting for all that, again, this is all separate. We think we can accomplish, with A, we, we thanked 500,000 in fund balance last year, revenues over expenditures. So if you assume the same year, you'd have that 500,000. In addition to property taxes, sales tax growth, that we're getting out of the gate the first two or three months, we're already seeing increases. So we're hopeful to use those increases to account for any salary and or operating overheads, that's the plan. Does that help? Okay. All right. So we go back here, if I can transition to bond projects. Didn't do spreadsheet, I have a slide on those. Just as a reminder, so the 40 million dollar referendum passed last November, a year ago. We have seven years by state law to issue that debt. So staff has begun to look at this, you know, what our options are. We think over the next six years, we will, two or three bond issues. And that could be in the variety of 15 million, 15 and 10, or 20 million and 20 million, depending on which projects are selected through this prioritization process and ultimately your approval and your blessing on those projects. Right now, we feel like we would issue that debt in July of 2017, which is fiscal 2017, 18. That then would necessitate a half-year debt payment every six months, or six months from your debt issuance, you have a debt payment every six months, semi-annual. So we would have a half-year debt payment in the spring of 2018. And then we would target your first tax increase in fiscal year 18, 19. Again, depending on how many issues and the amount, we're looking at a three to four cent property tax increase in that particular year. You wonder how you're gonna pay that, well, we would fund this first payment, at least our initial thoughts are, with this money in, in the bank right now. So as you know, we, we have to pay for design. We, we don't know how many projects or what projects are gonna shake out kind of at the end. So a couple of things we've, we've talked about. To pay for this design, as Meg has told you over the last, I guess, over this past year, we feel like we'll need to advance some funds from fund balance and that we made it below our 25%, as you saw on the prior slide, that would take us down to 25%. Another 2.4 million dollars would drop us to 20%. That 2.4 million dollars would pay for that design. And then when we issue bonds, in 17, 18, we would pay ourselves back. So that's front-loading or paying in advance for fund balance, temporarily dropping that down for approximately a year, reimbursing ourselves with the bonds will be issued to debt.
And when do we need to advance those, the design funds?
Well, in February, Freez and Nichols tells us they'll be finished, and that will be a city council meeting. That will determine, let's do a couple of hypotheticals. Let's say that we wanna do project, two projects, and I don't care which ones. But you wanna do, just need to decide if you're gonna do 15 or 20 million, you can do more, but that necessitates obviously a larger tax increase. I feel like that 15 or 20 is what we need to issue, one of those two options. So if you do that, let's say 20 million dollars in projects, that's what we want to go for next spring. Obviously, we've got to hire an architect designer, that process, depending on the. That process, depending on the projects, streetcades, streetcades and gateways would happen, that'd be quicker. Riverwalk will probably take longer. So you're looking at six months to a year of design. So that's six to 12-month time period, we could have to pay that designer with these dollars during that design process and when they finish. Bids then need to be received. We get construction bids in hand, we go to local government commission, then we issue debt in July of 2017.
But it'd be fiscal year 2016 that we'd have to tip into fund.
16, 17.
16, 17.
Yes.
But. When are we going to start the wayfinding, for example? I'm hearing people say that they must need something coming out of the ground. And that's not, I'm just not listening to myself. But I'm hearing other people say that. We've got to be making some progress from now and next year. More than saying we are designing.
Speaking to your wayfinding question, and Andrew, feel free to jump in. Obviously, that's the $800,000 number that we put up on the prior slide. Those funds are in the bank. That's not part of these dollars here. We can start that at any time. In fact, we've got an RQ, be ready to go out and search for it directly for that consultant or for that project.
So that consultant, what do you?
Well, so there, well, we have Fraser and Associates able to take a look at those plans and confirm that they, that they're ready to go to companies to give a bid. That's really where we are. Then it will be another month or two of being able to do that. So, you know, if you were trying to select a project off of that list, that's a fairly fast project. It's already been reviewed by NCDOT. You know, it's really pretty close.
But that really doesn't have anything to do with bonds, do you? So that.
But we're talking about bonds and other capital projects.
You know, we've also mentioned that, or we've been told that, you know, that the lackeys are hoping to break ground next summer. So, I mean, I think that might happen. You know, they might be a few months off on that timetable, but, you know, that's something that would be bond-related, not bond directly related, but.
Probably a part we hear coming to you in January.
Yep.
Well, I think the.
The quonos is starting.
Quonos, what they do is, you're planning to have that done by May, aren't you?
I don't know what we.
Mr. Porter.
I hate him right now.
I don't know if they can make it by May, but initially, we're going to try to.
I'm looking for an update.
I tend to concur with the mayor. If there's a, if there is a method that we could use to, wait a minute. In fiscal year 2016, begin some construction activity with our bonds. You know, obviously, you know, if you sequence it, you know, this design bid construct, you know, obviously, it stretches it out, you know, is there opportunity to, to, and maybe it doesn't make sense, you know, maybe it wastes money. Design gateway X, another design is working on gateway Y. You know, that design is coming in, we're going ahead and starting on gateway X while we're finishing up gateway Y. You understand what I'm saying? I, 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 I'd like, now, I don't know that that, how does issuing debt work? Do we have to? What's, how long is the process to do that? Could that be done during the fiscal year 2016, 17, as opposed to wait until 2017?
To issue debt, you have to have bids in hand.
Bids in hand, which I think is doable.
I mean, yes. So you could do it a little earlier, in other words. So you're saying not wait until July of 17 to issue debt?
I beg for that.
So ideally, well, back to your project. So if you did gateway, for example, and we talked about that, that would be your quickest project.
Right.
I'm guessing, Chuck, you know, three, four months probably designed, you could probably do a gateway or two in that. So, you know, if we're done in February, we get the green light, May, June, they've finished design. By the summer, they could turn their, own that project. I think that would be the fastest any of the projects could occur.
Right.
In that particular area, depends on how much money you're going to use for that gateway. If it's the full 15 million, well, maybe it's a 10 million, you know, it just depends on how much of that money you're going to spend. So I hear you saying you wouldn't spend all that money with just.
No, no, so for the issue debt, you have to have contracts equal to the amount of debt that you're having issued?
Yes.
Oh.
You don't want to sell too many bonds because of your expense.
Right, but that's the interest.
I thought we were going to look at working our riverwalk at the same time the lackeys, so some of that construction process is kind of all floating, which will move that hopefully up.
Ideally, we wanted to start this on on the riverwalk, the skeleton or the backbone, what we call city walk, and go ahead and have that designed, especially with the tiger grant. You've got the design done, so the next October, and hopefully that tiger grant will come our way next year. In addition to streetcades and or gateways, of course, that's, that's what your planning committees are working on and then ultimately, you decide that in January or February. But if you have those designs on the shelf, back to your question, what government commission is not going to give you 10 million dollars, you're going to have 3 million dollars for projects.
Right, yeah, and to Chuck's point, probably, it's not wise because you're paying interest on it.
Correct. Now, what you would do is, again, you would want to finance, you'd want to finance that with your own resources.
Right.
And then pay yourself back. The question is, how long can you go if you've got $2, $3 million in design? Plus construction of gateway one and or two? You may not have enough money to front-load that team.
Might be makes me think, are we smart to spin down everything, which is what we looked at in those earlier slides, and not have our power dry for going into some of this bond stuff?
On that, plus interest rates might take it, you know, costs is more. What does it cost to issue the bond?
Right now, I've got 3% next year. And then each year after, I'll pull it up 50 basis points, so 3.5% to 4%.
Your cost, the interest cost, the interest factor.
That's right. I mean.
It's about $300,000 to $400,000 tuition. Lawyers and.
That's different than actual bonds itself. He's talking about just the rate, rental bonds.
Oh, you're talking about.
Yeah.
Actually, both, I mean, I was going to leave.
But you'll have financing costs as well. You'll have attorneys and financial advisors.
You're not going to buy a credit extraction loan, so you get the whole chunk.
We're actually.
Ready, you know, cost ready for an all the way.
We'll actually have a financial advisor and they will market those underwriters all across the country and or world. And anyone, a thousand-dollar rent requirements can buy city and grid bonds.
I think the point of the workshop, too, is just to have you all know everything that we know about every project. We have checked in with each department. I mean, this really is the lay of the land for everything, not bond-related, but still considered capital or long-term. So we have a whole menu there to choose from.
This is the actual, can you email that to us?
Yes.
We have to. We've got one more slide if I can.
Be good for you.
A bit of good news and one to think about, some maybe some homework. So revenue considerations, you mentioned how we're going to pay for it. Here's one option. You know, the city of Hickory tag fee right now, we're charging all motor vehicles. And the city of Hickory have $5 fee. In the current budget, the state approved an additional $25 up to $30 per vehicle that can be charged to citizens across the state municipalities. We are currently getting $170,000 from that $5 vehicle. We could charge up to additional, up to $25 more, which would bring in an additional $850,000 per year. And there's, that's untapped. Currently, the $5 we're charging have been earmarked for sidewalks in the city. And that started back in the 90s, mid and late 90s. So that's an option that you currently have as an available revenue option.
Do most other cities do that as well?
It just came out, so we don't know who's enacted it at this point. Certainly, I can do some research on that and see. But at this point, I don't know, and I don't know if they have the legal authority. Probably has to do with the budget order. So they probably don't have the ability, I'd have to check the statute, to go ahead and immediately do that. Maybe next fiscal year till they add that.
Well, I'm not talking about the current.
Oh, $5? At that point, it could look.
But the other places will be there.
There's a lot to do it, I don't know the exact number.
I'd be interested in knowing how we compare with other cities around us.
Well, I'm thinking the $5 was the max anybody could charge.
At that time, it was. Legislation just changed in this current budget session.
Yeah, and nobody's had time to get it in place for this fiscal year.
Right.
So we should be the first.
That's an option.
We could not be first, Ed.
I have people complaining about the $5.
Well, I was here when it first was enacted and people called up and asked us where's their tag? They thought they were getting a tag to go on their vehicle. Would you tag?
Tag in front.
We had this one here.
Half, the half tags.
Right.
With the 35 and give a tag.
You had to have that tag on. You know, someone they make us some tags, maybe?
Absolutely.
And then finally, just, you mentioned parking, one of you mentioned parking earlier. Just reading to be thinking, as we do this riverwalk, as we do the city walk, as we start having amenities like the splash pad or the regional crawl for visitors, we really need to get a handle on what our parking fee situation is going to be. Is this for out-of-town residents? Is this a fee for, a discounted fee for city residents? As these amenities start to really take off and we start to get a lot of interest and visitors from elsewhere.
The convention center parking is earmarked for the day of the parking.
And I would assume we would commit ours to some sort of parking. You know, we talked about a parking deck on the city walk. So we could certainly pledge these dollars, and I think it would be more palatable to have these dollars go to make you pay for a parking deck as part of the city walk. But it's kind of that event parking concept. Just, just be thinking about that in the coming months as another option for us to consider.
I wouldn't want to see a parking deck on the riverwalk.
No, no, we're not planning on, Mayor, obviously, the city walk, I think, is beside the Hager Station. That's what we've kind of targeted as a potential location.
Be right below it?
Yes.
And with regards to, and not, I mean, with regards to parking fees and generating revenues, incidentally, I'm guessing. But even if our road forward, I mean, you're not talking about a lot of money. I mean, we can't get a lot of money from charging parking. No, so, I just wanted to hear. In the big picture of revenue, it's not really.
It's certainly not close to this one.
No, no.
A fraction of that.
You're right, right.
So that's all I had for you, as Andrew said, just wanted to get this in front of you so you saw the whole picture. You know, we've got the whole bond package. We've got kind of a unique situation with these eight projects that we've committed to some, some we haven't committed to, and then we've got the little operating budget that we will continue to work through that process over the coming months. Camera and I with the departments.
Also, I don't know if you saw, I was low in the ways kind of do that, away with all cars in the city and just. Cars and vehicles and doing so. Think it's kind of keep some of that out. I wouldn't want to get too big a parking deck business, something like that, cut a law. Who knows what's happening in the future? It's happened, the technology's advanced and stuff like that.
Right. Well, I would appreciate more conversation with, you know, with our council on these items, you know, full discussion about sort of, I mean, I think some of them, obviously, we committed to the Sandy Ridge deal. Lackey, I think we've committed the DIP, we've committed the splash pad. But some of these other ones, you know, have some conversations. And then have some conversations, because I, I don't, I don't, am I, am I, have I overstated it to say we are spending down just about everything we got to make all this happen?
Not overstating.
Okay, not overstating, and that's why, that's why I just want to go into it eyes wide open.
Well, the 25%, what is our total fund balance? 11 million, huh?
11 or 12, yes. So that's, that's your 25% set. So that's, when you say spending down, you're talking about capital reserve dollars.
I'm talking about the capital reserve, and then I'm talking about the design fees that we're going to be going different way 25% of. Yeah, and, and we're going into the bonds with, you know, with, you know, just this type, without having any wiggle room for opportunities that might pop up. I mean, I just think it's worth a discussion.
I think it's worth a discussion. I think we need to know that, we need to know if we can pay ourselves back out of bond rotations.
Or the design, you can, 100%.
Okay.
And if you decide to fund a gateway or something with cash, you can refund that within two years, staple all that.
Well, I. Hearing what Mr. Leo says and recognizing the validity of it, but I do want to point out that a 25% general fund, we haven't spent down to the end, okay? However, we like having that 25%, that's a good target for us to have. But I really think that the most important thing now, as long as we don't do anything that is going to cause us fiscal anxiety and stress or whatever, right there, we need to be getting stuff out of the ground. It's not a political move, it's just people are saying time is going by. And, you know, we look back at it and say, well, look at all these accomplishments of the lady. And we've got to get some stuff out of the ground. Wayfinding looks like a pretty good one to do. Tennis course looks like a pretty good thing to do. The last man, we definitely have to do that.
Somebody's told us, we've got some old council reports too. Friends of Hickory Park, I mentioned, is also, that's probably the first project. In fact, they've ordered equipment, it's supposed to be in this fund.
That'll be good.
Not in the ground, but in.
And can you also, like, for instance, figure where they are, like, your last fund or anything? I don't remember where they were on it, but to get the owners, they are, they're leading their calls.
It is.
Looking at their historical.
They, at our last conversation, they were in the high 300s and they had to go to.
Five.
Oh, high.
They were 500.
They have to be.
Yes, that's a, they're close to five.
Yeah, I think that is important, but I don't think that's a substitute for us bringing stuff out of the ground.
And I've gone two minutes early. But I'm happy to, I'm happy to, that's what we originally planned for an hour.
It's in progress, Ed.
Okay.
So I guess the hardest, the hardest part to respond to that is that we have to have everything designed to a point where a contractor can bid on it before we can go to the LGC to borrow. That's the hardest, really hard for you. If you can't get there back.
I'm not talking about more, I understand.
Oh, I see.
I'm talking about.
Wayfinding.
I mentioned wayfinding before, we do that, we can do these without a bar.
That is correct.
I'm not sure if it's wayfinding, because I know for a fact that we could have by the end of this year, we could have posted that wayfinding.
You like physicality.
Yes, we do like physicality.
I love it about California.
But if we don't say we're going to get it by the end of fiscal year, we won't get it. Maybe wayfinding is a good one. But I want to pick out a million dollars' worth of projects up there and say, we'll have the benefit of this year. And I think that's what people were starting to expect. That we have to do that.
Does that water and sewer project in downtown? That one will be high impact.
Talk about that, let's go here to the ground.
Thank you, I'll send this to you.
I'm driving down, you keep your eye on the bed. Just tell you how bad a life.